Justice of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in the physical liberty and justice of all.
Laura Paul, Maria, Chris Walker, Elise, here. Leslie, here. Brian, yeah. There's Wallace. Yeah. Shannon, yes. Eva Benjamin. Yeah. Michael, please.
You.
Do we have any agenda adjustments?
I just, did you want to add the delegate Emily's discussion because I had to go on that on October 21st? And it wasn't on there, but it was on the last recent faculty information. I don't have a ton to say.
Okay, sure. We can put that under reports?
I would put it in the old business.
Old business? Old business E. Do I have a second for that agenda adjustment?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up, approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 11th as presented?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the workshop of September 26, 2023 as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Here is unanimous.
I'm sorry, can I get the first again? The first one then?
I made the motion.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up, presentations. Next up, committee acknowledgements. So from the last meeting, there was questions that Greg Knowles had, and that was in reference to the boiler, I believe, for some repairs. And I know that was addressed like on the spot and then in finance committee, I believe.
Yes.
Next up, we had some questions about if we had any updates on any lawsuits. If we did, then we certainly would report out what we were able, will be having executive sessions with committee. Next, we had Richard Seer. Richard, that's some great education that he provided to us, I appreciate it. I just would ask if there's anything specific in Herman, please follow the appropriate channels so that we can address him. And then next or last, Ed had had some questions about surplus, and I know that that was delegated to the finance committee as well. Do we have any other committee acknowledgements?
I just wanted to, I apologize for asking to speak right now. I have a medical situation that I need to get home to attend to. I just wanted to speak for Shannon and myself. The fact that we are not they, we have names, we represent 236 students at Herman High School, 42% of high school population, and we're going to work hard to do the best for all students for Herman and RSU 87. In the past couple of years, in the past few months, they has been a common word used to describe RSU 87 board members. Some of the comments have been, she's not even a voting member of this committee. I don't have to answer you. Why should they take up one of our seats? Not sure they have a legal right to vote. The town council is looking into that. In 1962, Herman and it was then as AP 23, now RSU 87, entered into the first contract for RSU 87 students to attend Herman's high school. The current contact contract expires in 2025. So over the years, the contract had and has ensured a positive relationship between the two boards for both financial and educational benefit of both districts and all students concerned. So they is not an appropriate term for us as representatives. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I do need to leave because I admit that the situation that presented itself this afternoon. So I thank you.
Thank you for everything you and Shannon do. I greatly appreciate your knowledge and participation. Do we have any other committee acknowledgements?
I just wanted to mention that we have 10 students signed up and those. We have 10 students registered to go to Key Leader in a couple of weeks, so that's October 13th to the 15th, and it's in Camp Kentucky, something like that, in New Hampshire. And so those students are of wide variety of classes. They are from student council, key club, and J R T C. So we have a wide variety of leaders attending that out of state camp. So thank you for the approval to go on that field trip. It's going to be a really great opportunity for those students.
Do we have any others? I just want to say excellent job. I always appreciate Mr. Freeman, the different posts that you'll put on Facebook, and I saw one where you were engaging the whole school and had them quite loud in the gymnasium. So hats off to you for doing that, but I think it's a great thing to do for the students. I also want to say thank you for having a successful homecoming week. It was great to see the number of students under the lights on the chart for the first time. So thank you for that. Any other committee? All right, we're now going to move to the public comment. This is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on agenda items, contribute information that may be of interest to the school committee or ask clarifying questions. Please wait to be recognized and identify yourself before speaking. This is not the time to register complaints and promote personal agenda. Please remember that you may not identify any person by name or job function. So first up, we would like to welcome Richard Seer.
Greg Wood, thank you very much. For the last several months, I have been continually speaking about protecting our children and also our parental rights. Last month, I was talking about how our children are being indoctrinated and convinced that they can be scarred or mutilated and eventually neutered, all under gender identity and the guise of trying to prevent suicide. Study in Denmark where they have already had many years of this find that they are 19% more liable to commit suicide once they've gone through neutering and realize they can't have families anymore. That is the main reason why I'm bringing that up. And for Mr. G, the question is, why isn't you aren't trying to protect the children rather than say this is hateful speech? And for parental protection, the state is trying to take away parental rights. 16, 17-year-olds now who undergo gender transformation without their parents' knowledge and without their parents' permission. Until they are 18 years of age, they are under their parents' control and guidance unless they are making the child's life endangered and the state can come in and take them away. But until they prove that they are not fit parents to take care of their kids, they have all the right to know what's going on with their kids in this school and anywhere else. Around 8535 signed by government, underage children may get gender care. In other words, they get horrible treatments and eventually neutered and neither the school nor anybody has to tell the parents what's going on. In Ontario, Canada, the head father was trying to talk his daughter out of taking hormone treatment because she wanted to become a boy. The state of Ontario, province of Ontario, put him in jail for two years because he wasn't allowing his daughter to try and become mad, which was impossible. All they're end up doing is neutering our future parents. And the other thing is that California is talking about removing kids from.
Richard, I asked you to grab up your comments, please.
And California is talking about taking kids away from the parents who don't allow them to be undergo gender transition. Thank you very much.
Next up, Chair. Next up, Steve Thomas.
I would just like to make a point of clarification. I spoke or I addressed the school committee in August about a few concerns primarily around.
Could you state your name of these matters?
I thought you just did. Steve Thomas, Herman. So I'll start over again. I addressed the school committee in August about concerns about Herman IT. And in the response that Chair Euler provided in September, she essentially tried to dismiss my concerns. And she said in her response that I referenced pornography in the school. That was not the context of my statement. The actual statement, just that one statement, what I read was, records indicate that a registered sex offender convicted of felony computer crimes and possessing electronic pornographic files of minors under 12 could have or may still have full access to the school's network and remote access to their devices through access granted to a school vendor. This information was provided to the proper agency by residents, not school administration. I'm not going to repeat everything else, but I have to wonder if this is one of the reasons why the school committee refused to comply with an IT audit approved by residents of Herman in September of 2021.
Thank you. Next up, Greg Moore.
Greg Moore, Herman, school committee members. Looking over the current packet, I saw there's approximately $700,000 left over from the 2223 budget. I would like the school committee to consider putting an age-appropriate activity area at the middle school. Currently, there is just an open field there. The middle school principal has already done initial light work on this. Please remember that middle school students, they are range from 10 years old, which the fifth grade is still considering elementary school age children, to 14 years old. I think that the middle school principal has a great idea on that, and this could have a direct effect on the quality of the life of the school and the students right away. I just would like to hopefully take some, who all will think about taking some of that money and using it for them. The parent advisory council has donated basketball, not basketballs, footballs, kickballs, frisbees, drum rums to the fifth grade to help give them something to do other than chase each other around the field. But again, please consider using some of that funds left over to provide an activity area for the middle school students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Regina Leonard.
Regina Leonard, Herman. Once again, I need to address my concern about the apparent disregard for rules within the school committee. As members of this committee, it is your responsibility to set an example and ensure the fair and consistent implementation of regulations that govern our educational institution. Rules exist for a reason. They provide structure, safety, and fairness for students. They are not meant to be overlooked or dismissed at your convenience. By failing to follow the rules, you undermine the very foundation upon which the system stands. This lack of adherence sets a poor example for our students, teaching them that rules can be disregarded without consequences. You have two students near crossing on the stage watching for ridiculous behavior. We must remember that our primary duty is to provide a quality education for our students, and this cannot be achieved without a strong commitment to uphold the rules. It is essential for us to acknowledge any oversight or misunderstandings regarding these regulations and rectify them immediately. We need to foster a culture of compliance and transparency. This requires collaboration and open communication between this committee, faculty, and parents. We need to work together to ensure that everyone understands the importance of rules and the impact they have on the overall learning environment and the climate of this community. Stephanie Euler, you have not corrected the illegal voteless committee name in the first meeting regarding the vice chair vote. You have not corrected the illegal lawsuit filed against a taxpayer. There was no public vote taken. I've asked this over and over again. It took you 30 minutes in executive session to decide to file a lawsuit against a taxpayer. You allowed another board member to send a distributory letter that resulted in a federal lawsuit, and the reward for him was to make him vice chair. You allow, you allow with no apology or recourse, this same member to harass, demean, and defame women, parents, and taxpayers in this community more than once. You are currently withholding information from board members that is information paid for by our tax dollars. Stephanie, you accepted the role as chair. This falls on you. Rather than unite and lead, you continue to allow it, and you treat a fellow committee member in public like a piece of garbage, and we're all watching. In your first meeting as chair, your response to one of my statements was, it's a new year, we can do better. When does that start? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any more public comments? All right, so now close public comment and move on to personnel.
You have one transfer in front of you, Mr. Barry, who was at tech at the high school to start the year. We had a recent change in student placement at our high school, and so we had a possibility at the elementary school. So I'd like to train, obviously, to approve a transfer there.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? unanimous? Next up, co-curriculars. I believe that's just an FYI, but.
Yes, sir.
Next up, old business. We have excuse absence of school committee members, and don't believe we had anyone in the last meeting. Yeah, we did have Shannon. Do I have a motion to excuse Shannon from the last meeting?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up, the director of IT job description.
You have in front of you the updated job description. This was vetted by the tech committee.
Do you want to? Let's open it up to public comments looking just before we start. If you have any public comment on any of the old business items that we have, I'm going to take them as approved.
Hi, Danielle Habery, Herman. I just wanted to say how much I appreciated the IT committee, Haley and Ryan, you've done an excellent job. And before you voted on this, I was just really impressed with how the committee rules, and I have no specific comments to the actual position. I just want to speak to the process that I wish it went through. I appreciate you guys putting it back to the committee, and I appreciate all the work that you guys did as a committee. And it wasn't just Haley and Ryan, Greg as well, and the other people. And I just want to say that the process was wonderful. I know you guys have a big task to take on for the rights to IT, so I just wanted to acknowledge it and say that this is turning our ship in the right direction. So thank you.
Greg Moore, Herman. I presume we were looking over all those policies too. I was looking at the DJ policy and moved all the information from the old policy to the new one, and I didn't see any code where it required the superintendent to get any type of approval of projects. Maybe I missed it. I know in the old one, it said all bits, an excess of 150,000 shall be approved in advance by the school committee. That didn't get transferred over. I presume it's just a mistake during all the transfer and movement of that. But it's only just at some point in time showing me if it's not, if it's somewhere else and I missed it, I apologize, but I appreciate that kind of doing.
Thank you. Any more public comments on the old business? All right, the next one. To you, my friend.
You have in front of you the new draft for the IT director position. As already stated during the public comment, this was brought to the tech committee on, I believe it was September 26th. We had a brief discussion, and obviously we got bringing that forward as the first draft, or I should say first draft, or as the recommendation down to the tech committee.
Do I have a motion to approve the job description as presented?
So moved.
Good. Second. Any discussion?
I wasn't sure under the qualifications, number two, five years of successful experience with technology and with at least two years, if we could change it to in leadership experience preferred.
Any other adjustments or discussion?
Can you say that again, please?
Yeah.
Qualifications, number two, five years of successful experience with technology and.
The in part used to be, actually, that used to be voided out.
Yeah.
And leadership experience preferred versus with at least two years? Because sometimes having good experience with leadership is ideal. So leadership experience preferred versus it being a must.
So if we really do look at it as a period of technology, five years of successful experience with technology period, at least two years in technology leadership role. Two separate statements so that you, one is required, one is preferred. Does that work?
So we want it to be preferred versus required.
I just believe it needs two years. I mean, obviously, that's preferred, that's always the idea of the more the better.
In my experience, when you're looking for a corrector or a principal or a building level, two to three years is a pretty common, whether it says preferred or must have. That merits to be based on the committee. So that's two to three is a pretty common. I think. You need to have a number as a discriminator, so however that number goes. Can somebody repeat that again, just so I have that? Five years of successful experience with technology period. Yep. At least two years, but correction. Two years in technology leadership experience preferred. Period.
That could be an actual motion. Yes, I'll second that.
Part of the discussion, so it'd be part of the handle. You make the amendment.
I made a motion to amend accepting as written and to amend number two to read at least two years.
Five years of successful experience in technology stop. Two years of technology leadership experience preferred stop. Sorry, period.
Did somebody retract their initial motion? I'll just guess that one was on the table to begin. Sorry. She gave a memo. And just so does somebody send it back?
Second.
Any other discussion on that?
I noticed on what used to be 13 minutes now 10, it says researchers, but I believe it's supposed to be researchers. And I thought.
You were right.
Any other discussion? Good job. All those in favor? Unanimous, motion carries. Let's move to, do I have a motion to approve the second reading of policy B, the Herman School Committee rules as presented?
Come on. I just have a question. We keep making motions to do things to accept it as it is before discussion. Is it better to have the discussion before we're going back and amending things? Because they're like, it always makes it confusing. It may save you time. So we're making a motion to accept as written. That's the process that we've done. We can entertain that for another one. Okay, thank you. I'll send you the protocols. Do we have a motion to approve the second reading of policy B?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Did you have any of that? All those in favor? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve the second reading of policy GCRD tutoring?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I do. I have a point. I'd like to see if we put any provision on the end of the tutoring for policy, tutoring for paid policy. I think the intent of this policy is to create separation between the roles and responsibilities of the teacher while they're contracted employee at the school and when they're on their own doing tutoring for pay. So I'll ask the committee to entertain a statement such as the Herman School Department is not responsible or liable for any private agreements between parents and teachers. Be added to the end of policy.
I'll second that.
Do you want me to read that again, Mr. Grant? Government's word. The Herman School Department is not responsible or liable for any private agreements between parents and teachers. May I make a suggestion? Sure. I would consider adding that outside of this policy.
Same thing?
I think. Something to the effect of like outside this policy. Because the, they will tutor students that they have during the school year. Yes, right. Yes. Right. So did you mention any? Well, it was part of the tutoring for. As, as pay. So if there are any new agreement for pay between a parent and a teacher, Herman School Department is not wanting to do the correction. Thank you.
Any other discussion on that?
Well, I'm just curious, because Mr. Red just made a statement that is the exact opposite of what the policy states, if you know. You said teachers will tutor. You said teachers will tutor our own students basically for pay outside of, that's what I.
No, they will tutor their students during the year. That's very common. Out of agreement with a parent, yes, your student can stay after.
Gotcha.
But I missed the private agreement and that would not be with your own, you can't do that with your own student.
Okay, thank you.
And that tutoring falls within the collective bargaining agreement of contract with teachers?
Expectation.
Expectation, yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up, do I have a motion to approve the second reading of policy GCSB?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up is Herman's School Committee Goals for the coming year. This may not be something that we finalize today, because I want to make sure that we have goals that we all agree on. But what did anybody have or ideas on that? I know there was suggestions brought forward and I can certainly bring those, but what did anybody else have? It suggested that potentially we have fewer goals and definitely have them measurable. So. Ryan, do you want to watch that or you want?
Sure. So I put four goals for us for 2023-24, which is somewhat different than the direction that we are in years past. It goes back to my past experience where goals were usually, or goals were meant to be, it's pretty smart, it's smart in a sense that they're specific, measurable, attainable, relevant and time bound. And then I sent the chair my ideas of four areas for us to work on, which were finance, student achievement, technology and safety, which I put in case of student vulnerability in regards to active shooter. So I drafted four goals in rather loose terms for us to consider for tonight. Would you like me to read them, Chair?
Does anybody else have any ideas to take on that?
I still support, like I did last time we did this, was including teamwork and communication with the community and feeling, having the parents feel like they're part of the process and promoting that and obviously supporting our staff and goals that align and supporting them. So I know you like less, but those are still priorities.
Which numbers were those that you wanted to keep from us?
I don't, it wasn't included in this packet.
How would you like to measure? What are these you have for us to measure and ensure that it's all right throughout that? Good question. And we don't have to have the answer today, right? Like, so this is why we're having a discussion today. I don't want to rush it. I don't want to just put goals out there so that we have goals that want to be goals that we all agree on and that we feel that we can attain. So I like that one.
How would we survey those things? So that's all right. First instinct is that if you have a chance to come up with a measure, I think that's a great idea. Getting feedback. Where we're at and what the community wants and what parents are feeling supported and even surveying the staff and feeling, are we meeting their needs and are they, as a committee, is there more we can do to support them? So.
Is it possible to see what Brian recommended for just the ball over the next part of the show?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I sent it out to, if you don't mind, Chair, an email, just send it for everybody to see.
Do you want to talk about some of, I mean, we could definitely talk about some of them now? So that people here just. Because I have.
I can read them if you just want to.
No, it's okay. I want to skip ahead to goal number, I can read if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Goal number three, I really definitely think that technology is one I'd like to implement a five-year technology plan by March of next year that focuses on modernization and. Looking at network systems exceeding industry standards for network security and establishes a standardized device for educational use. So I definitely think that that's something within the tech committee that could be addressed. Mike, do you have any thoughts?
I definitely think that's the direction that the tech committee has headed in. Certainly when we have the, even the job description references, having a five-year tech plan. More than that, so I think that would be a great goal for me to figure that out.
I'll send, I'll send them out to everyone so that everyone has them. There was another one around student achievement, definitely I think it's something that we should look at. I think as a committee, hard for us, it falls more on the administration, you know, ensuring that this happens, but how do we provide support to them for that? But establishing a curriculum subcommittee by January 31st, 2024. The only thing that I have there is I don't know if we'll have that position billed necessarily. But I really like tasks to review test scores and performance indicators, improve student achievement to meet all main learning result benchmarks, achieve 50% of greater RIT scores by 2026. I like, I like that it's specific, it's measurable. I just want to make sure that it's something that we are, as a committee, are able to implement. I don't know about the curriculum subcommittees, I just don't know where we would be with that position. Mike, did you have any thoughts there?
In regards to the position, the, I believe I stated in my report, the plan is to review the job description this month with the administrative team, bring that to folks for November approval and then post that position. The department is obviously posting it November, a candidate that we can bring to that position. Will somebody, you know, apply mid-year? So I just don't know if we'll have a person in that position. That would be my only concern with. Having it be done through the curriculum coordinator, which obviously would be their, their area of expertise. But as far as reviewing scores and looking at the standards that are being assessed, those are things that can be done, which is probably not to the depth that a curriculum coordinator would be able to do, principals do a great job, just a coordinator would really have a lot of time to do that.
The finance one, and I would encourage you guys to talk about it in finance committee if possible. Because I don't know if this is achievable or not, and I'd really defer to Jamie. To complete the 25 budget process by March, that includes zero relative local share funding, reduce and stabilize undesigned fund balance to less than 5% of the budget. So those are definitely some specific numbers, but I really would defer for you guys to be able to talk about it a little bit more in the finance committee. I like the idea of having goals tied to the different subcommittees. I think that it could be good for us to have on policy-wise to ensure that we have every policy that MS, I might be using the wrong acronym, so I apologize, MS or MA has. By looking at the glossary of all the policies they have, you know, and ensuring that we're all up to date there, you know? So just different measurable goals. And the safety one, of course, very, very important, that would tie into facilities really, addressing school active shooter vulnerabilities, conduct a threat assessment for instrumental violence and school threat risk assessment from a third-party specialist by March of next year. So I like the idea of tying them back to subcommittees. And I like, I thank you, Brian, for getting the ball rolling with those, I really appreciate it. So what I'll do is I'll send it out to everybody for different ideas. Unless anybody had anything else. The goal will be to finalize them next time, so we can talk about them individually within subcommittees, et cetera. Next, I want to open it up to the public for the new business category of our meeting, emergency management plans, reading of policies, bus purchase and remote day.
I don't know if you guys took the time to read through the fact that Jody had sent you the last meeting. I had a little over an hour. I support everything that's in there for the most part, so I don't really have any. Anything that is whether debatable of all things, I support things that I think we as a community want, which is. They did speak about promoting parental involvement in school and having a committee that supports that. And I was glad to see that since they were against the parental rights bill, that at least they took a position to say that they do support parents, just not with the law. So other than that, is there anything in there that you guys are not in support of? I'm supposed to bring the vote at the majority of how the board feels? So if there was anything in there that you want to discuss or that you don't support?
I mean, I haven't had the chance to do that.
Okay, thank you for participating in that for us and representing us, I appreciate it. You're welcome. Do we have any other discussion on that? Now I'll open it up to public comment for the new business section of our meeting. Let's take a motion to support, support the delegate assembly as we're in it.
So moved.
All those in favor? Motion carries.
I missed the first, sorry. Was that?
Yes.
Now we will move it up to public comment for the new business items. Emergency management plan, first reading of policy, bus purchase and remote day.
Hi, this is Doug Herman. I have nothing prepared, but I just see about the remote day being on the agenda. And I wanted to share that I certainly support there being a remote day. I know it can be inconvenient for some parents to have that, especially if they're working. But I have worked the polls myself. I know that we get some heated people in there, some heated emotions when elections are happening. And being that it's held in the gymnasium and there's not really a safety net for people to enter the school, I would really support the children not being there. I think at this point, that's the safe assumption that we have. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
You can correct me if I'm not, but if I'm reading policy BED, shouldn't you have opened up a comment like this for the old business when you were discussing the second reading? I feel like last year we hadn't thrown that to your attention so that we could have a discussion on the second reading.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that to my attention. I apologize for the confusion, I took it in. Did you have something to add?
I did, yes. I just wanted to comment being at the policy subcommittee meeting. My frustration was that, you know, you have it come to, you know, goes to the subcommittee. It comes to the first reading, there's discussion, there's feedback, there's this. And then you went back for the second reading, you didn't have any of the information that was presented as, you know, good matter otherwise for the second reading, and it's just kind of getting shoved through. These are things I wouldn't realize if I was sitting there, and that's a concern of mine, that not only as chair, but chair on the committee, that you should have been better prepared and take into account, you know, what the comments were. You also have the person with the comments at the meeting and didn't let her speak. However, you let a council member speak. So that's what I was saying.
Thank you so much. You're welcome. Do we have anything else under the new business category?
Danielle Haggerty-Herman. I just had, I want to talk about the bus briefly. I appreciate the idea of spending some of the large undesigned fund towards a bus purchase. I believe that's on the agenda, correct? I just wanted to clarify, since it wasn't in the budget for this school year, I assume if it's coming out of the undesigned fund, will it then have to go through the process of going to the town council and then to the community for a vote as well? Just looking for clarity on the process.
Any other public comment on the new business items? And we will close public comment. So next, the emergency management plan. Do we have a motion to approve the 23-24 plan? Do you have anything to add to that, Mike?
So moved.
Any discussion?
I just, I support passing or agreeing to the emergency plan. I just got some housekeeping clerical things that I'd like to be able to send and have cleaned up. Like maybe when it, on the screen, on the computer screen, it looks good, but when you print it, it's quite not the way you intended. So I've got some of those issues that I'd like to just, administrator will, it's just housecleaning, it's not concept or how the actual plan works.
What I liked about the emergency plan was the very obvious, seems obvious to me, was communicating early, communicating as much information as you have to family and parents no matter what the emergency is. That way rumor mills happen quickly and the best way to decrease chaos is to communicate. To Mr. Green, he's trying to be sending out information and I greatly appreciate. We don't have to wonder what's going on, because he's always just sending us, firewater didn't work or this didn't work. It's great, and then it gets fixed and then we know. So I think everyone just gets fixed from that. So I read that emergency tonight, today, and I was like, oh, it advises. Communicate openly as much as you have, so. Any other discussion?
All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up, do we have a motion to approve the first reading of policy TJ bidding purchasing required as presented?
So moved.
Any discussion?
I have some discussion. I know I brought up to the head of chair and actually was able to pass it by superintendent as well prior to the meeting. When we go to paragraph two, bidding purchasing not acquired by law, that section, there are several references to an increase in the fund, the increase in the value that can be purchased without a competitive bidding. And I recommend to the committee that we stick with the micro purchasing level through the federal government, which currently is $10,000, that our policy mirrors or complements that the federal government's purchasing and bidding requirements. Not that by following, I can take any purchasing authority away from this superintendent, but it provides a level of oversight or a level of protection for him. And in my former life, it kept me out of trouble. So I think this is something that we've not hampered the purchasing of needed supplies, but we provide a level of oversight. So to go back to it, paragraph two, bidding purchasing not acquired by law, first paragraph where it says materials or services over currently shows $50,000, to have that be the micro purchasing level, the micro purchasing threshold, which is currently $10,000. Paragraph two, on RFPs, it says equal to or over $50,000, to amend that to the micro purchasing threshold, $10,000. And then in paragraph three, where it says purchases less than $50,000 or have that be $50,000 and cross out or and have the same when. So that it would be $50,000 when he and she determines quality, expertise, time factors, et cetera. Don't allow them to do the, it simply requires them to do a competitive bidding above $10,000.
Good, everybody?
Yeah, I have some feedback for that as well. First, under section A main law, it was increased to $250,000. I'll do my best to try to explain what that is or why I would like to see that go back down to $100,000. So for purchase services, the law states, as you were saying, $10,000. Anything that needs repairs that will cost over $10,000, certainly you need to have an engineer design for that, which is why that's probably was originally written that way. I've checked several other schools to see what their policies are, which are also $10,000. As far as the bid process inception A in the main law, it should remain at $100,000, because that is the bid requirement versus 250 is the like public bid announcement. that is the bid requirement versus 250 is the, like, public bid announcement. So I'm, that $100,000 is for, allows you to still pick your vendors. So I would like to keep that in our current policy with that $100,000.
I can better explain it. So you want to change where it says 250 to 100?
Yes.
Do you want me to explain to the other questions? Just, no. And then, I'm not sure I fully agree with Mr. Viviana about the third paragraph. Um, we, I feel like I should say $10,000. For going to bid process, it needs to be less than $1000 to not bid at all. The superintendent may forego the competitive bid process purchases less than 10.
No, because the policy already, if you change paragraphs, paragraph two, subparagras, one and two, you change that 50 to 10, he's already not required to do bid process below the micro purchasing level. So below 10, he already doesn't have to do it. So what we're saying is if it's above 10, we give you the leeway to go up to 50 if you have this anyway in circumstance, which is written as determines equality, expertise, time factors, or other important considerations outweighed the possible benefits bidding. And that's the way it's currently set out. So 10 and below, he doesn't have to do a bid already, so why would we say that he doesn't have to do a bid yet?
Well, I thought the policy itself was redundant. I agree with you. Um, and actually, when I was looking up all of the laws, it actually states purchase and purchase of services includes involved expenditures of $2,500 or less. So our $10,000 is actually still quite high. It's basically saying the superintendent has the right to spend $10,000 no matter he feels like it. That's basically what this policy is saying. To make it 50, would be, it would blow through a bunch of so fast.
So what number are you requesting, DJ, in paragraph three?
I don't know, you lost me about 10 minutes ago, so. I'm sure, because paragraph three, I think if it remains the same, gives the superintendent the authority to, to, it's actually what we currently have.
I'd like to make a recommendation to send this back to the subcommittee. Uh, there's a lot of changes, and I think it would be good to get those changes communicated to the superintendent and to our chair, and then have them re-reviewed and, uh, a little bit of time to digest it all.
Do I need to, um?
We're not going to make a motion to send it back to the subcommittee.
I amend that motion.
I'll amend it seconded it.
I second the motion to send it back to the subcommittee.
And the discussion, just so I can recap, the items that everybody's suggesting, it said the 250, we changed to 100. In paragraph two, Brian, you're suggesting that that first 50 goes to 10?
Yes.
And only that number changed, the other two stay 50?
So for bid, it changes to the micro purchasing.
Which paragraph?
Uh, two, one, bidding and purchasing not required by law currently shows 50. That should, my recommendation is for that to be 10. And then the next paragraph, both these RFPs, or request for purchases, should be 10. And then the next paragraph, it should remain at 30.
What do we want to add on that?
So just so we're super clear, when I sent the email for this to come forward, I said policy equals Jay and DJH, and to add in all of the 23 and 1/2 hours I've put into researching this, I went to subcommittee prepared. I don't understand why we can't have these discussions and why you won't let me work with you. My email actually said I wanted to work with you guys to work through this stuff, so we don't end up having these conversations here. You were not open to having help or support at the subcommittee. So I would further the motion, maybe that we could work together at the policy, at the subpolicy subcommittee together on this. So we're all on the same page and understand what we're going. So the policy is jive together and complement each other, and they don't contradict.
So you're asking for DJ and DJH, which was my original email, have those together in line of law. I can send you all of this information. I've put a ton of time and energy into it. I'm just asking to have a seat at the table to have the discussion, so we don't have to sit here for an hour and debate. I don't know how it goes to the productive, this conversation. We, we can, I'll reach out to you, uh, actually, if you have a follow-up on it. Any other discussion? We're going to send it back. All those in favor? Next up, the bus purchase. We have a motion to approve the purchase of a bus.
So. Second.
Any discussion?
Reimbursement? Question on reimbursement? There is a reimbursement for the bus, correct? Would that be then applied back to the bus reserve? Kind of need done back into the general fund, trying to clean up the side balance. So would this come back and frustrate the, you know, side balance? So do we need to make the decision now, or how does that affect the budget again for that one?
Okay. Do we like the fact that the finance committee, whether that goes into, where that?
Oh, like where the money goes? Um, it's going to be reflected in the 279 for, what do you mean, next year?
Next year.
The 279?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're not going to have this pot of money we have to decide what to do with, like, coming to us if we buy this bus.
Okay. So I'll, I'll make a note to myself for the finance committee that the bus purchase reimbursement should be then used to refund our bus reserve for future years.
Micah, that, so what happens is that should appear in the FY 25, 279, but the, we were not anticipating getting, uh, a bus in '24 because of the supply chain, so we didn't have it in the budget for this particular year. But part of this is kind of like the changeover from financing the buses for three years and then going to purchasing the buses outright each year. So depending on which year, um, you know, Jason would have more information about the approval process for purchasing buses, um, but those funds would go into the current year budget to go towards the purchase of the bus that were approved for during that fiscal year. This is like the transition year, if you will, going between doing the three-year lease and purchasing it outright. I hope that makes sense.
This bus was approved in this previous budget cycle. It was approved.
I believe so, yes.
So this is the bus for the 2024, half a year?
But it's coming now.
But it's coming early.
It's coming early, right.
So it was approved, but we just didn't anticipate it in this 24 budget.
So we don't have to, we don't have to acknowledge if it came a year ago.
Correct.
We voted in, I think, May, I thought, but it's to be, you're saying it's not in the budget? We're using undesignated funds anyway. We're using the surplus funds, but then we're going to turn around and get refunded for it, which is, I would also agree with them, that we were trying to.
But we won't get refunded this year. Because we didn't have our 279, but it won't be this year. It will be a 25 month.
Right. So the reimbursement comes a year after the purchase, and when we were discussing this in May, we had initially been told that we would not see the bus during FY '24 because of the supply chain. Um, we are now being told that the supply chain has caught up to itself, and the bus is going to be ready for us in this fiscal year. So we were not going to purchase the bus until FY '25 because of the supply chain, but it was for our FY '24 approval. So we, we would need to use undesignated funds to purchase the bus for FY '24, and this is like a reset for FY '25 going into purchasing the bus each year as they are approved. And then evaluating if we're not approved for a bus during that process through the Department of Education, then we would want to consider, um, what to do with those funds at that point. So when we get to the end of fiscal year '25, we would want to consider, did we get approved for a bus? So now we need to use the money we got in 279 for the bus in FY '25, or no, we didn't. Should we put it in a hang reserve at that point to purchase the bus the next year? So the reimbursement on the 279 is directly tied to us purchasing the bus, but it doesn't happen until the next year.
So there's nothing, we can put the money in the reserve now, and then as you remove it from the reserve when the bus comes?
Right. We don't even need to necessarily put it in the reserve now. I think what we need to do is have the bus, because I think it's going to be ready before we need to worry about putting it in reserves. So I think what we need to do is get the board approval so that we can bring it to the town for, um, the level of approval needed at the town council level, uh, to be able to utilize those undesignated funds.
Any other discussion?
I have to go back and look at the video for what, refresh myself. What did you want to look at? Because we're saying, I thought, I actually have to go back a year when I was just up there and I listened to the bus approvals and the purchases, so, um, what's the question?
Yeah, I thought we were already going to do this, and you were saying some money. We've already voted, I thought it was voted in this budget, that the 2324 budget we're in. You're saying, no, it was the 2425 budget. Have we voted a year in advance?
I don't know that we actually necessarily budgeted specifically for the bus purchase in FY '24. I know that the transportation was a large topic of conversation during the '24 budget process, and that we did have the transition year, and that we should, we would be approved for a bus in FY '24, but the bus would not be available until FY '25. So rather than budget the funding in FY '24, when we may not receive the bus in '24, we delayed it until putting it in the FY '25 budget.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie. Do we have a motion to approve March 5th, 2024, to be a remote day for pass?
So. Second.
Any discussion?
How long does the approval process take from the state for that remote day? Is that going to be a, um, what would you say, so it'll be all like zoom?
I don't know if it will be zoom, but there will be some process in which the teachers communicate to the students what to do on that day electronically.
And what's the timeline the state needs to know or approve that? Do they have to approve it as well?
No. I would inform the state that a part of our district was in remote, um, but I don't need approval for a two-day. You can give approval for this.
Any other discussion?
What, what discussion has there, has had, has happened with us in the town on getting voting site change? I, I agree that, you know, this is a short term, it's the safest approach to go remote, uh, but it's certainly not the easiest for our teachers, for our students, for parents. Um, so again, short term, this, you know, in, in March, I'm okay with this, but the next voting cycle, we need to have a, a different site, so we don't have to decide location remote.
So this March was because of the primary, due to a presidential election, so it was not on our radar, because we don't think like that, obviously. So this one didn't touch us off guard. Um, we obviously have June, which we always spoke with because of the end of school and what we have, so maybe, and then November. As far as discussion, I have had discussion with, uh, Mr. Barry, and I know he has looked into other, um, venues, but as far as me saying, you're out, too bad, I, I don't qualify, I have authority to do that.
No, no, we have time now to figure out. We have plenty of time now to figure out a, a better solution and getting our kids and teachers out of the school.
Yes, I, so I think ultimately, if you would like me to take the town and Mr. Barry a message that we don't want to keep doing this, and we would really appreciate you finding another site, I would be more than happy to do so. As far as me working with the town on a voting site, that's not my problem. It, it's just not, it falls away outside the purview of what I'm expected to do. I'm more than happy to carry that message though, and say, we would really appreciate that if you could find another venue, because we, when we get into years like this, we're looking at potentially three days of remote for our elementary school aged children. But I don't have any power to select a new site and help them select a new site.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion cares? Next up, administrative reports. Did, and we'll take them as presented, did anyone, any of the administrators want to come down and add anything to their reports?
I was going to ask, I'm going to Mr. Walsh's report, and I forgot he was here, so. Can you do the football thing?
Just sort of wrap it up, so we, because we have an election series in our, okay.
Not going to happen.
Okay. So before I get into addition, were there, since I'm appearing on, were there any questions on my specific report, any of the data, or the crosswalk or anything on that one?
I was just going to ask for you to let the community hear what you wrote about the crosswalk, or what you, the report that you had on the crosswalk, it said, obviously, area of things a little bit different.
All right, so for, for the public, um, we ran into an issue at the start of the school where a student, who for the last year or so, her parents who dropped her off at the plaza across the street, she'd get a pumpkin or brew two or whatever drink for the morning, come across, push a button, signal goes online and crosses the street. So at the start of the school year, this student did what she's done again for over a year, she hit the button, traffic stopped, lights were on. A parent coming out of the high school did not see the signal and almost ran over. So this is obviously concerning, and it's a, it's a major concern. I did meet with the student, did call her parents, um, obviously they were cacking on the cabinets and were relieved, but it opened up a conversation, um, I contacted, I actually had several parents who witnessed it call the school, and that's how we were then able to kind of track down who it was and what happened. Uh, I reached out to Scott Perkins at the town, and we had a conversation regarding the crosswalk, which is heavily used, um, by our students both before and after school, and certainly it's games and events. He reached out to the region four MDOT engineer who came out to the school. The day that the engineer came out, he came out between, uh, 1:15 and 2:20. If anyone's ever been up to the high school between those times, uh, you know, we have a large number of vehicles exiting the school, as well as the buses and students and so forth. And that's the same in the morning, referring to high school parents here, but if you've tried to drop your child. And that's the same in the morning for very high school parents here, but if you've tried to drop your child off in the morning, then it tried to take a lot of time to, you know, the congestion. So, at any rate, he was able to observe a large number of, um, crossings and really, um, some of the things that he saw were concerning. Um, some of our students did use the crosswalk correctly, some of our students did not use the crosswalk correctly. Uh, just so the board knows, and I get out of mention of my report, when the crosswalk was put in, we actually, at the start of the year when we have our, uh, class meetings, we actually mentioned the crosswalk and making sure to hit the button, wave to the lights. We had a lot of kids who have never grown up with crosswalks, um, whether it's from Carmel, Banglin, or there's been a lot of crosswalks around. So we actually go over intervention for the students. Uh, at any case, the, um, MDOT engineer noticed that on at least one occasion, a student pushing the button correctly, only one of the beacons came on. And even more concerning, another time students pushing the button repeatedly, none of the beacons coming on. So we don't know that morning, uh, when our student pushed the button incorrectly, um, could the person exiting the high school actually see a beacon depending on what happened? So the findings are kind of the important part. Uh, MDOT is suggesting we may want to look, we, and I say we, this really is the town, not the school, but obviously we want to, um, look at putting, um, beacons perpendicular to the drive. So when you all leave here tonight, if you notice where those are, it wouldn't be an additional pole. It would be putting one perpendicular. So if you're facing the school or facing now where people come across a dump, in essence, one facing each direction on the pole, so multi-signal. And that way, when you're coming either way, uh, hopefully you would see it. Uh, the other thing that the, uh, TOT engineer, uh, recommended and said something about was the maintenance on these switches and who's doing the maintenance, how often the maintenance. And he did mention in his report, uh, that those, those, uh, buttons do go out. I mean, they get hit a lot, they get touched a lot. Um, you know, everybody in here knows what it's like in Maine in the winter. I definitely know those buttons are exposed to wind, rain, snow, sleet, et cetera, ice. So, um, Scott and Scott Perkins have been great to work with. He's been extremely responsive. He's got my back to me. So I look forward to, I think I said this in my report, um, first, ultimately we want everybody to be safe first and foremost. All of you, no one in this room wants a child to run over quite far. Um, secondly, he will keep the abreast once they figure out who's going to do the maintenance, what it's going to cost, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, at the end of the day, we just want our kids safe. And, um, I think if it takes putting up two additional beacons and making sure there's a proper maintenance schedule on those poles, um, that, that seems like a low cost to make that happen. So, um, but I wanted the board to be aware of that and the prompt response, I, I felt prompt response, uh, from the town and actually the fact that the state came up that fast, uh, that's positive. Ultimately, the high school would love to see a light, but as everyone knows, that's beyond our control, your control. In fact, the town's control, that's up to the state. So, um, I think this would at least mitigate some of the concern if they were to do what's recommended by these state engineers.
So, do we need to request something from the town? Does the town already know about the issue and they're actually going to?
So Scott Perkins is who I've been dealing with through, through the town. So, uh, he's certainly aware of the prompt to it. He's going to the point person. He's going to communicate with the engineer. Um, I don't know, Mr. Green might be aware of the conversation with Josh. I'm assuming Scott is aware. Um, Scott had made him aware, but it wouldn't hurt, uh, for that conversation.
We are waiting for, uh, a gentleman at the state to follow through on Victor's recommendations. Uh, he's from region four and once, once they, once this gentleman makes those recommendations to Scott, then Scott can take action.
Any other questions on the report as written before I add a few things?
Yeah, the library resource data, I knew I was going to ask that.
So I brought my laptop, actually I was seeing from.
It's not meant to be that difficult. So have you seen any correlation between age and grade versus, um, what tier they've assigned, they've agreed to?
Great question. So this is, this is some interesting data. You'll notice, uh, we've got four hundred sixty-six students at the library. Um, the library, we had forty-five was tier two. What I, what we've noticed about the tier-two data, and I have to be careful how I say this, um, we have some programs here that the selection of that makes sense for, um, given some of our programs. Um, so those numbers is forty-five total students, but I did see a trend, um, in that which makes sense to me. And I don't want to expand on that because I still don't identify specific students. The interesting number, uh, to me, we had fifty-three students not return the form. And so I, I took a look to see, okay, we're fifty-three kids and, um, forty-four of those fifty-three, the vast majority are juniors and seniors. And so I had some conversations with those students and, um, Brian, you asked about whole pathways last meeting and that's a long discussion, great presentation, um, that's going to be a fight for some of the system that does. Uh, but we have a large number of students who take college classes, who go UTC, who take courses at Hudson, EMCC, UMass, the University of Maine. And so as I was talking to some of the students who didn't return the form, the vast majority of those students, again, juniors and seniors are in our local pathways. So their response to me was, we have access to libraries well beyond the capabilities of the high school library. So I found that rather interesting, um, that they're able to use resources they need through the college course if they're taking and at the campuses they're taking. So that was kind of like, okay, it didn't make sense to me until I started talking to the students. I'm like, this makes perfect sense. If you're over EMCC, taking English one-on-one or at the University of Maine, taking English one-on-one, you're more likely to utilize the resources than are put there for you, um, for the courses. Um, overall, when we look at those forty-five numbers that might take out specific programs, it's really nine to ten versus eleven as well, which I think makes, I don't think it makes much of a, uh, makes sense, but.
And then of the four hundred and sixty-six students that are assigned up for full, full access, how popular is it?
Um, what I have not done, I think the question really is, I wonder how much, how many books will be taken out of it? So what I will do is, um, I will talk to Mrs. Stahl, that's been in the library, first started in August. And what we can do is we can have her kind of look at the data and kind of decide if we're going to put it. I don't think that'd be very difficult to do, um, since everything is computerized now. Uh, but I would be able to say that, um, from a qualitative standpoint, I don't think it's changed at all. I don't, I don't know if, um, tons of students running out taking our books, um, but I can get actual data to, to look at that. When I, when I go to the library, I want them to utilize it. Um, I think they're using it more, um, as a place for quiet study and to get resources and technology than they really are the actual, uh, print books that we have down there. And I don't think that's changed in probably the last five years. And you have two very good students sitting on the, I understand you'd probably comment on that as well, but, um, the numbers are, you know, where I thought they probably would be, the eight percent, and if you take the total, that's returned ninety-one percent, that, that doesn't shock me at all. Um, again, this is high school, so I think it's a little bit different. And I think conversations, you know, on the form itself, um, where we ask the parent to have a conversation with their kids and return the form, we know the best of their students where they're at. So again, high school kids versus, um, K for short.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Um, I noticed that the numbers that added up for the library status were different than your total enrollment.
Correct. I knew you're, so oddly enough, I'm prepared, so we have some students who are on our rolls, but do not attend here. And so I don't want to get very specific programs in greater Bengal region that we send students to. And so they are, looking at my total enrollment number, it is different. Those forms did not go home to those students who don't come physically come to school here.
And so with that, I was also noting that I thought the projected was like five ninety-five. So does it be five sixty-four or five sixty-seven?
Okay, so we had five ninety-two on paper as of, I think, about the third week of August. And I know Mrs. Smith's here and she can correct me if I'm off on my memory. Um, but the, you may have noted, I, I put this in my last report, um, the amount of students who get transferred out this year has been exceptionally higher than we normally see. Um, and so, um, that's a, I don't want to say it's an anomaly, but it has been compared to where we've been. And I did look at those numbers of last, prior to last meeting, just in case anyone asks. Um, and we do have some students utilizing main virtual at a higher rate. Um, this is the very, I think it's six go to homeschooling.
Yep, that would be right.
Perfect. Um, so six of those are homeschooling. We have probably five main virtual. So that's eleven that are different than the norm. And, and we never, I mean, I've been here a long time and to see a plus minus in that way, um, but I'll tell you, it was scary to me. The last time we had that was oh seven, oh eight, um, when things went sideways. So I'm hoping this is not a predictor of the economy, like it was then, but, um, so, so that's another change. We had a lot of kids move, um, from our, um, whether it's our central school or Herman's. So that's, that's not a norm for us. You're welcome. Any other questions on my report before I add?
I assume the guidance, information on financial aid, I, I'm concurrent with college visiting, colleges visiting, I'd certainly publicize. I mean, I'm bringing that for the good.
Oh, no, if you, hopefully people like us on Facebook, not just our athletic stuff, they do, um, Mrs. Smith does a phenomenal job. Um, she is my go-to on social media stuff. I am not Mr. Freeman. I graduated high school before there were computers, um, but she does a really good job, uh, keeping, plugging our stuff on there. So if you don't like us, please do. Uh, there's a ton of great stuff that's going on for sure. Thank you for bringing that up. Um, and I, I will, we have multiple pathways when we do that presentation. We'll send out the message we always do with the board. We'll get one because, uh, some of you will be blown away if you would have not seen that, the opportunity that our kids have now, four years until they're on the school, it's pretty amazing. Any other before I add? So just want to, um, share with you something that has occurred. For those of you who are not at homecoming, we had a fantastic turnout of students, um, parents, community. Uh, we also had some incidents that occurred and it's interesting, um, Fox Trot Academy did send out a posting for those who would follow football, um, right prior to their homecoming. And they said they, um, they took away kids playing football on the sidelines during the games. And, um, we kind of seen that, we're like, okay, it's their place, they can do what they want. We had two children, and I stress children, that were injured at the homecoming game because of kids playing, um, football on the sides. And those children were both treated by the ambulance that was there, just some triage and on their way. But it obviously has been, we'll get our own practice here. And so we're going to send out a message tomorrow and I just want to make you aware of it tonight. Um, we're Friday's game and the next home game after that and hopefully a playoff game, I hope we, I hope we win out here. Um, we are not going to allow football being played outside the field while the game's going on. Um, the other interesting part about homecoming, um, I don't, I don't, I'm not the principal of little kids and maybe, I mean, I don't know if there are any rules on the one-year one, but we had kids running around. I don't know what they were playing, tackle, tag, whatever. Um, obviously we have to do, figure out how to corral those students because they weren't really there to watch the game. They were bouncing off of people and vehicles and it was, if you sat in the stands watching the game, I heard it was a great night, um, to watch football, but it was, um, like herding cats when it comes to little kids. Um, some schools have gone to, uh, you can't just drop your kid off and you had a ton of that that night where parents would drop their kids off, re-admission. They don't think they're going to be for two and a half hours. And then it's a, kind of like a bump ball in a middle school experiment. Um, you get little kids running all over the place. We're not saying we're going to go to that at this point. We're already just going to stop, uh, the football that's going on on the sidelines. Because what happens is our kids playing that are really excited and having a great time. They don't care if they run into or knock over or hurt. And again, not being malicious, but that, that's the reality of the crowd for you. The second change we're going to make, uh, as to the parking lot, we did end up trespassing five individuals that night who were making bad decisions, um, behind the school in the parking lot. Uh, I'm very out to give or not Kermin. It were none of our sending town residents. It were none of, none of, none of our kids. But we had some people make some bad decisions, uh, with drugs and alcohol in our parking lot. And we have noticed the larger the games we have, the more stuff that has been going on in the parking lots. And yet we get fifteen hundred, two thousand people up here. We just don't have the personnel to monitor everything. So what we're going to do Friday night as well is no re-admissions. So if you come to the game, enjoy the game, we've got great snacks in the shack, we've got restrooms, et cetera, but no more of this going on to the parking lot and then coming back in because we've had issues. Um, this is the first time we've been to trespass anyone. Um, I won't get into what they were doing, but it was not good choices. Uh, we also had some issues with some kids from other schools, uh, jumping on vehicles and, um, some mayhem that occurred that was also aggressive. So we're going to try to do our best to tighten things up. Um, I have asked Mr. Sinclair to see if we can get more people to work. Just like everybody else, it's difficult to get people to come and actually work a game, not watch a game. So, um, I've actually personally asked some people and we just, we want people to have a safe, fun family environment and you don't need children getting hurt, um, or people using drugs in our parking lot. So, uh, some of the headaches come with a lot of people and game management and some of the changes we're going to make and see how those go. We have two more games left and as I said, we went out, we'll, we'll host a playoff game when I open you. Uh, but we want a positive and good environment for our fans and our players, not kind of what we had this summer.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
So as far as law enforcement, I know the school supplies the SRO possibly or some law enforcement in the town. Are they called, are they going to hitch in on those mites with the, uh, search the town? Is that already being done or is that something?
So I know deputy boys in the audience tonight, um, and that's our, these are SRO but also on duty tonight. The, the reality is, um, we call and ask for law enforcement and the reality is we get what's available. And it doesn't either not good people or it's just, uh, we're not the only show in town on a Friday night or a Friday for county. So, um, we don't think the answer is necessarily two or three police officers. We think the answer is more people who know our kids and more people who, you know, a, a fourth grader doesn't know who I am. Um, and so I'm just some old guy yelling at them. Um, you know, it'd be good if we had some people with the kids actually knew and might, um, respond a little bit differently. Um, so I don't think the answer necessarily, you know, we, we have about two police officers at that game. We've asked for police officers and we can get them, but I also know they are short-staffed as well. And I said, you don't need to speak for, you know, the sheriff or anything like that, but, um, it's a, it's a, it's a tough assignment to get enough people.
I was just thinking, you've mentioned multiple things that would be law enforcement issues and then just taking them out of the game and then so.
Right, so you're all back with the police officer trespassing idiots who made bad choices with drugs. Now you have administrator and police officer who are not at, at the, you know, fifteen hundred people.
Yeah.
And this is the truck, so the problem is great. We love people coming out. I mean, the facility looks awesome and I think it's only going to grow, but we've got to figure this out from a game management side now. So again, a couple of kids getting hurt is not okay by any means. And that's why Fox Trot put the policy in place, put the practice in place. Um, we didn't, but, and we, we were kind of, kind of clear why they did that and fortunately figured it out pretty quickly, uh, with the last game.
So cameras, are you, do you have enough? Is it catching what was out back or is that?
So again, it's a, I don't want to turn this into an IT conversation. Um, we do have cameras at the school. Um, we happen to have some that are currently out right now. Um, we have one on the seventy-five foot antenna, but I can't just send this to you or sign up there or fix it. I wish I could, uh, that would be interesting. But you actually need someone who sort of thought maybe this, oh, there's a whole bunch of variables. So then, then the question is at night, when it's dark and you're out back, you do have lights in the parking lot, um, and we addressed some of those issues. We had some lights that were out when we started the other night, but, um, I, I, there's more to it now. Uh, we don't want to wait, um, heavily and then respond. We'd rather be preventative if we can.
Absolutely. I just want to make sure if you feed that footage that you have it.
Yeah, thank you for that.
And then, um, monitor. Oh, how are you going to monitor them coming, like stamping the hand with one collar?
No, what we'll do is I've already hired Mrs. Smith. She said yes. Um, what I'm going to do is hopefully in addition to the ticket takers, I'd like them to, and I say, I say, I love it. Mr. Sinclair, I love a fair camera. Not me, but I would be there. We'd like to look back at the number of staff members in each gate. And if people go out as you're leaving, you will not feel a lot of that.
You just can't, they're handling the way out.
No, honestly, people, again, having done games for a long time, people are pretty good. Same thing when we're here in the winter at the gym, people are pretty good, especially if they know who you are, um, to say, okay, yeah, well, okay, I'm coming. Kids will just turn around and go back in if they really want to stay. Um, I think adults won't be as difficult either. Adults realize, adults will realize why we're doing this for sure. At least I hope they do.
I honestly don't know. Does that policy allow you to be here at my tent now?
So I would love for one that says we don't, but, but I, I would be honest, we don't, I don't think we want to go to that step yet. Um, but some schools have gone to that, which, which, what's happened in some schools is Friday night football becomes pre-basis. And I don't mean that in disrespect to anyone's kids, um, but when you have a couple hundred key agers running around, um, unsupervised, something is going to probably happen. Uh, last year, Mr. Freeman was nice enough to come over and work a couple of games. Um, and these kids know him and it's a lot of, I'll call it middle school behavior. I don't know what they're playing, like each other are running. Um, I don't even, I, we played this, we played dark games when I was a kid, but I don't even know if they have a name, but there's like constant running around and I don't know if it's the candy, I don't know if it's the soda, I don't know if it's the bean. Um, but we, we, I don't think we want to. But we, I don't think we want to go there yet. If we have to, it would be a conversation, but we want people in the games. We like the excitement, but we want them at the games, actively participating in the game, hopefully watching the game if possible. And that was maybe not the case the other night, so.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, for all the work that you guys have done on that. We greatly appreciate it. Anything else on the administrative courses that we have? Michael, did you want to give us any update on yours?
No, just continue to keep it a loop and rehearse the water. Mr. Davis had some pieces to that and he has to make sure. Keep your water bottle for deep bass and have it used for the treatment for the most recent water quarter. So keep it a loop on that.
Thank you. I have a few questions for Mr. Grant. I was wondering that he would say, or you were suggesting Mr. Davis' duties on the metal roof, which wasn't something that we had discussed at facilities meeting. I mean, we talked about the roof, but the roof wasn't thinking. So I was just curious. You had a projected timeline for that to be completed fall of spring. Where does that stemming from and?
That came out of the finance committee meeting.
The roof was discussed at the finance? I mean, I was there, but I think I must have missed that part.
Yeah, we, the finance committee said we should look at capital improvement projects. And I said, well, we did at those schools. And so I'll get some bits for metal roof because that was one of the items that was a pretty high D in the school, but he has to act on it. But I'm not going to sit quietly by when we know that that might be something that facilities committee can take up and want to have those things in place.
My major concern is that we have a science lab that doesn't meet code here at the high school that has students in it. And my first priority is that the kids are taken care of and that they're up to code. So before we look at doing a project like that, I think that's a priority is to have a tour of the high school and make sure that those kids have those multiple things met up for.
I'm not questioning your priorities. I'm just getting kids in place of that facilities committee when it's done doing the tours can decide on, you know, it'll have the information in front of it, they can decide where it was allocated, the undesigned fund balance.
I was also a little concerned about the I T situation and having the outside entity and it's all been continuing to have remote access to the school. How long is that going to go on and how is that monitored?
I do not know that. So that's, and how that access is granted when we are down, that is something I want to follow with you and Mr. Allen, obviously talking about how do you give access to get help? Is it, do you give them their password and they can access in? Or if it's not me, they could just have car wash access to us? But I've been following like, you know, what the entire community don't know about that.
And then you didn't mention the update on M S L N, when they're going to start. Do you have any new information for when the library's work will be?
No, the only information I shared was at the tech committee, excuse me, yeah, it was at the tech committee. So I can't remember what we talked about, ignorance of M S L N. I assumed that somebody was going to report out that they had been on the internet. And we are hoping to obviously have that in place for computers then and et cetera. Actually, earlier, but I guess, I guess I'm not understanding your question.
Just clarify, do you have any new information from them when they were going to start?
No, I'm sorry, I do not have any new information. That was not what I shared at the tech committee meeting.
And then my last question was contract negotiations where you had mentioned you were having those R S H eighty-seven because that's underway. Are you having those? Is Brian and Chris involved in that conversation?
That's not a contract negotiation as far as the, what Brian and Chris are involved in. That's contract negotiations, that would think like the bargaining, that's the teachers' issue.
So they don't have anything, do they, the contracts that the school works on? This is a question specific for his report. I just want to make sure. It's a question about superintendent, yeah?
Yeah.
Specific to his report.
That's not a report.
Or wasn't mentioned in the report that it's something he reported to us and asking.
So that should be, you'll have to, can you be, you know, with your question? Because like I said, it's not in this report and I'm in reverse negotiations. I know that Brian and Chris and I will start teacher negotiations sometime this winter or early spring. I know that.
Anything on the finance report?
I did have some things for Mr. Freeman and Mr. Davis, but on respective time, I'll, I'll see you, you know. It's nothing pressing. It was nice to talk about stuff. So I'll see you in there.
Let's move to committee reports if you have facilities and track funding. I, track's underway. I guess the surface isn't going to be done until late next spring. Stephen Thomas is actually here and he's part of that committee. He can speak to that more today than I can. Definitely with everybody else.
We have a enforcement for the high school. Mr. Walsh and Mr. Davis and I have been batting around for days. And as soon as we get it down to one or two, you and Mr. Davis are, we're getting a fight with both of them. And we'll see if we can make one of them or draw five or less or four plus how many there are. We're moving that up over eleven, twelve and that range to try them. Mr. Davis is scheduled to be a lack of, a bus drivers is challenging to project this far out, so.
So, Mr. Thomas, did we have a track update?
Yes. The company that was, they, they were going to provide the rubber surface. Unfortunately, we get a notice from them a couple of weeks ago saying that I think one of the delays around the state, probably in Lincoln with all the rain we had earlier in the year, I have to push back some things. And based on, I guess, the current weather pattern, they do not feel that they can do an adequate job putting down the rubber surface this year. What they indicated is that the temperature would have to be fifty degrees and rising when they actually apply it. And it takes basically two weeks to cure. And they want to be able to make sure that they can fly a more on P on that. So unfortunately, as much as we pushed back on that, Scott Perkins was great. He actually did, you know, went out, they did the long-range forecast, provided the information. They absolutely refused to work with us to finish the rubber surface track. So at this point, I think everything else will be done. Paying for the track will be done. Most of it's already done right now, but everything except for the rubber surface will be done before winter. And we'll have to work out the details, start testing the rubber surface again next May. And so that is going to have a negative impact on the spring track season. But it should be available for a direct track program next year.
Thank you. All right, do we have any update for the finance committee?
Yeah, we have a quick update on that if you don't like Mr. Grant. At our second finance committee meeting last week, I think we're moving in a very positive direction. The primary discussion was over decreasing the fund balance that we currently have. The underutilized from the 2023 budget was eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. And that was of a one-point-two budget, a one-point-two million dollar budget from the carry board, which gives us an approximate unassigned balance of two-point-one million dollars. We discussed what it took to become compliant with D O E fund balance. And to become compliant with the D O E fund balance, we would have to make arrangements for five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We use the number six hundred thousand dollars for planning purposes. Of that six hundred thousand dollars, we agreed that it would be prudent to use the money for the bus purchase that we'd already discussed. And then whatever money was left over from the initial bus purchase, that remaining bus money would go to the bus reserve so that we could help fill out the bus reserve for out years. And then that would be the balance of four hundred thousand dollars to become compliant with D O E fund balance requirements. And the recommendation was that that should go to C I P. And then the facilities subcommittee should get together and create a priorities list for projects. Discussing it with Mr. Grant, we need to schedule a facilities subcommittee meeting with a projected date to have a recommendation from the facilities subcommittee for how they use the four hundred thousand dollars to sketch your projects for the December school, full school committee meeting. So that gives the facilities committee two months to do whatever work they need to do to put together priorities just for that. So if we could please have a facilities subcommittee, and I know it's not part of the finance committee, but if we could include them in the next subcommittee meetings are scheduled for one November, which is actually a Wednesday rather than Tuesday. If, if facilities could somehow get worked into that. I'm not part of the facilities committee though. That's all I have.
Thank you.
That was, we're pending a report from Carpenter Associates, right?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, that's what we're been waiting on, to have the facilities meetings and a report that's, to jump off. Do you have a time frame on when we expect that support?
I have not heard from them.
But we still have the 2019 report and that's a pretty darn accurate. So, I mean, we don't need to wait for them to tell us they're not going to tour. So it's okay for us to tour the facility and see what issues that they've been waiting on, on our own and utilize in the 2019 report as well.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the tours, just to keep it up. But actually prioritizing, it'd be good to have a report that's ten, four, or five years old. To have one that's updated from Carpenter Associates as a starting point, that'll watch prior to us, we use that. It's a lot of money, so make sure we do, 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 do,[1383.14]
So that the next priority can be that we ensure that everything that we should have a policy for, we have a policy for. Did anybody have anything else that they wanted to add to that agenda for policy committee?
I'm sorry, I had a question for the finance still. Do you want me to complete until you're done with this, I'll pull back.
Yeah, let's finish up policy and then we'll pull back.
So you said DJ is going to be on policy?
Yep, the two, I don't remember the exact letters, DJ and.
DJ.
DJ.
DJ, I forget those two. Did you have anything? Did anyone have anything to add that they wanted us to review?
I had mentioned last time, the voting method, B D E F. B E D E F. B D E F voting method. It's, a lot of other schools have that policy, just outlines.
Yeah, I don't know if we'll get to it next time, but we'll definitely keep it on our list. And you said we were going to work on this subcommittee policy for our report. And that aligns anyway. Any other questions or anything for policy? Okay, going back to finance, do you have a question?
I did have a question as far as it is kind of crosses over to policy for the finance committee to review which staff have credit cards and the policy and procedure that outlines the use and how those are monitored and approved.
I don't know that facility committee issued, because we already have a policy on how credit cards are managed. I believe we.
Me too. I think you pointed, you pointed that out to the students.
Oh, yeah. And I know Jamie, I discussed it briefly with Jamie on credit card approval, so.
Okay. I, I have been in the finance, so I was aware there was a policy that outlined it.
Okay. Anything, or can we give updates on technology maybe? I know there's been a lot of work down there.
Okay, MSLN, we discussed MSLN at the tech committee. And we went over some pricing for it. And then the ongoing monthly cost will be reduced to two hundred and thirty-eight dollars once we get the installation completed. Our current contract expires in December, so the expectation is that there'll be a transition to MSLN to ensure that there's no gap in coverage. We, it was a decision to order the program frontline. I want to think that. Order frontline so that in inventory we completed systems and devices. And we worked with Mr. Moore on the committee and he's going to help with that. And then the audit update was that the audit had been completed. The results were being compiled and would be reported to the tech committee as security deems fit. Because if there's any issues with our technology, it would increase our vulnerabilities if those findings are made public. So any findings will be made public once they are corrected if they are of a serious nature. And then the other, I cheated our job description, which we, so those are the way to take away from the IT committee.
And anything else? Bruce, update? That brings us to possible future agenda items?
To discuss how subcommittees work and having us all work together so that we can participate if when they're.
So is that not the same as the subcommittee policies that we're looking for creates?
Well, I'm not sure because that doesn't outline all of us sitting at the table working together.
Right. So it's.
I have a question.
My question is to have a discussion about us working together in subcommittees, which is going to be part of the subcommittee policy. That's the purpose of creating it.
Well, purpose of creating is multiple reasons, but you're saying you want to write in that language that is going to allow communication to work numbers? If that's where we all need to look at. How will we do that if we're not allowed to work? We're going to bring, you're going to back here.
We're allowed to collaborate one-on-one outside of meeting, absolutely, as we learned from the training. And then we can bring it to a board. That's our opportunity to be able to discuss it.
Did you have anything else to add as a Jedi? Brian?
Yes. I, I got it as, I listed it as a goal, as a, I realized we're short of coordinator. And I, I understand that we're in a tough spot, it's our best concern. But student performance and testing results are really something we need to, to say we're going to get to it is an understatement. So I know the principals have some good data. We're coming up on a year since we had any sort of formal presentation, which was in the lia's. So, and then I, I know that there are other test results out there from the spring lia, I'm sorry, the winter lia. And then the end of the year is usually years testing. You can have to help me with that. I'm giving Mr. Freeman thumbs up. But student performance really should be driving what we do. Everything else is, all these policy arguments, it's secondary to student performance. We've got to get there. And I don't know if the audience is feeling some frustration from me. It's because we've got to get to those sort of issues that we find ourselves bogged down on other things. Not that the other things are not important. It's that student performance is a major issue for us. So with Mr. Grant and principals, if you could please help us get us to that point. So if we can have some sort of student performance provided, at least in the, if it's not an agenda item, provided in the information in the packet, that would be greatly appreciated. And then, and Chair, I don't know how you want to, I know we discussed, you want me to leave that to you?
Yeah, okay.
I'll leave that to you, we'll discuss. So I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I hear you're a lot clearer with what you're saying with performance data. And that's why I, it's frustrating. We've corrected it many times, but it's still not corrected to the satisfaction of everyone else. So next time on the agenda list, please have an item to correct Chris McLaughlin as vice chair. I, I've tried to correct it several times. There still seems to be some confusion. I want to be able to have that as an item so we can put it forward and quite frankly, move forward with performance data as well. I am frustrated as well because those are the items that we need to focus on. So I really look forward to putting a period to that and moving forward. So that will be something that I will correct next time.
Will you also correct the vote?
I, I tried to correct that. We all knew what we were voting on. I used the wrong word, I used the wrong word, co-chair. So the initial quote, I did not mean to correct it, but I chose to. I chose to correct it and doing so, I used the wrong word. And I apologize for that. And I'm just going to clar, clarify it and even though I don't need to, but I really just want to move forward for the period on it.
I do, I do want to move forward and, and I'm going to be super honest. I also want to move forward. But for every single parent, every single teacher and the students that are watching us, if the foundation of our meeting was done in error, there's nothing wrong with anything ever being done wrong. It's wrong if we don't correct it per the law. So all I'm asking is for, we can't say trust the process to all of these. You all trust the process, these are the rules. If we don't do it right, how do we expect them to do it right? I couldn't care less about being vice chair. I'm saying that I want it done so that it's according to law. There's, that's, that's all I'm asking.
It's already been corrected.
It's not.
I'm not going to argue about it. We're going to put them on the agenda and go forward. Did I have any other future agendas? All right. Well, during the approval of the OPIAs, we will take them in a group of seven. I have a motion for three people to assess it.
Two. Second.
Any discussion? All those are favored. Of the AMAs, we'll adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-three.